Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is the City of Aspen City Council Regular Meeting for October 25, 2022. That is a call to order. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
Councillor Hovenstein.
Here.
Councillor Mazero.
Present.
Councillor Richards.
Here.
Mayor Torrey.
And here as well. Thank you again for being here this evening. We are actually going to start our evening off with the APD joining us for a much-needed bear update. I don't think it's any secret to anybody that's living here. The bears have been extremely active this year, and we want to give people a little heads up on what to expect coming up.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. Linda Conserga with the Aspen Police Department, and Jenna Gordon, and she's a community response supervisor, and she's going to just fill you in and give you a quick update on what our bears have been up to in town.
Our bears.
The bears.
The bears. Hi, council. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear from us today. Linda said we're just going to give you an overview on this season and some of the trends and things that we're seeing out in the field when we are responding to bear calls. So first off, I want to just let you know, this season actually started off as a slower bear season. However, some of the late frosts that we saw last spring really heavily impacted our food sources in the fall. So a lot of our surface berry, choke cherry, acorns, natural food sources that you would see in the high country, the output wasn't very good. And so what we saw with that was a precipitous increase in bear activity in town in the fall. And just to give you some numbers around that, 75% of our bear calls for the year occurred between August 1st and October 10th. So that was about a two-month time span. 75% of our bear calls happened. So we've had a really active fall with bears. All that being said, we have a bear task force here at the city, and it includes a partnership of a couple different city departments. So we have Environmental Health, we have the Parks Rangers involved in it, and we also have our Communications Department involved with it, as well as the Aspen Police Department. And we have been doing work year-round on trying to mitigate some of the bear attractants in town. And just to be clear, we aren't able to manage a bear population. That's not our role or responsibility, but where we can have an impact is in mitigating attractants that are bringing bears into our community and into our town. So our approach to our bear program this year is really a three-pronged approach. First and foremost is education, and that's obviously a very important one in a community like Aspen. And so we work really hard to educate our visitors, our community, our residents alike, on best bear practices and how to be bear-aware. And just for you all to know, about a third of the Aspen Police Department's outreach budget goes towards bears alone.
Wow.
So we take it very seriously. Additionally, this year with education, one of the new things that you would see is that we were able to make most of our content bilingual, so that we're engaging a larger audience on how to live in bear country. Last piece I just want to throw in on education was this year, we were able to participate in a community meeting responding to the unfortunate circumstances that happened in the county with the sow and her cubs. And the meeting was actually, I believe, Mayor Torrey, you were there, but the meeting was actually very informative, and it was great to get feedback from the community. And we're really hoping that we can continue to see momentum at that community level to partner with us to share this important messaging and help get that across. Next prong that the task force worked on is prevention, and this is kind of a new thing for us. And we were able to do this because of the partnership that we had with Environmental Health and with our Park Rangers. So it really increased our ability and our scope. And instead of addressing a trash issue once a bear was making entry, we were able to take a preemptive and proactive approach to identifying containers before the bear had gained entry. So looking for compliance issues, maybe it's damaged, maybe it's not latched, and then following up if possible with whoever the owner was to have a resolution. Because bears have great memory, and once they're getting into a container, they know they can come back and they're going to keep coming back. So we want to continue that momentum to address problems before the bear gains access. And just that last piece, again, we were able to partner with Environmental Health and the Park Rangers, who are a huge asset, to help us continue the enforcement and continue dedicated alleyway patrols throughout the summer, which we have been doing. Any questions? Okay.
Well, I would ask, just for the public, that just because we've had a day of snow doesn't mean the bears have all gone to sleep yet, does it?
That's correct. I saw a bear today. And he was very much awake. Yeah, so just to expand on some of the work that this team has been doing, this is the breakout of the type of contacts that we are making. And I really want to highlight that 65% is more preventative and on the front end of addressing this issue. So that education, 34% of our contacts have been educational-based before we even have intrusions. And then compliance observations are us, seeing something that's wrong and addressing it before the bear had made entry. So a lot of great work on that end, and we hope to continue that momentum into next year. All right. Sorry, I've got a lot of stats for you today, but I think it's pretty interesting when we break this down. This shows all of our bear trash intrusions that this team has responded to this year. And the information is pretty interesting, and I'm just going to highlight a couple things for you. One thing I want to highlight is that only 4% of our trash intrusions were for improper container. And that's actually a result of a lot of work that's gone on in years past. I know, I've heard stories before I was here at the police department, where no one had the right container. And now you drive the alleyways, and people have the right containers, and waste haulers are providing people with the right containers. So that's a huge success. And this year, there's been a lot of container shortages and supply issues, and we've still been able to keep that number pretty low. Other thing I want to highlight in this graph is that 13% of our bear trash intrusions have been bears making entry into recycled material. And so you can see that picture on the top right corner of the PowerPoint, which is actually, that's a recycled container, and that's a bear that has, well, there's no bear on there, but a bear had made entry into that presumably. And one thing to just highlight for council is that currently in the municipal code, recycle is excluded as an attractive. So they don't have the same container requirements as our solid waste. As well as compost, that was 6% of our intrusions. In the picture down there, that is a compost container, and the bear was able to gain entry into that container through actually breaking the latch, the lock mechanism on the top. And then the big thing I want to highlight, that was a trend that we saw this year, was 33%. 33% of our bear trash intrusions have been bears actually able to overcome containers and break into them. So the fascinating thing about that 33% was it wasn't just a single type of container.
Yeah.
We're seeing bear-resistant containers.
And bear-proof.
And bear-proof, yeah. So if you look on this slide, that container on the top left, that is bear-proof.
That was bear-proof.
Yes. And I actually think they're going away from that terminology now, for this reason. And then those plastic containers, those are both considered bear-resistant, both of which are permissible by our code. And then the other thing you see in this top-right photo is actually making entry into a trash enclosure, which to me are the gold standard. I love trash enclosures. So that was pretty shocking to see that. One other thing I just want to point out on this is if you look at that picture in the top-left corner of the bear-proof container, you'll notice that there's a lock on it. And that is something a lot of businesses are doing in the core because theft of services is an issue, and they report that a lot of people will illegally use these containers and then leave them unlatched. And so that's one way that they can ensure accountability amongst users. Is anything? Okay. All right. So other breakout I just wanted to show council was of our bear trash intrusions, 42% of those are in shared-use containers. So that's either residential shared use or commercial shared use. And so one challenge that we have with that from a law enforcement or policing perspective is that it's challenging to enforce. We don't, a lot of times, get to talk to the person who left that container unlatched. So figuring out fault can be a little bit challenging in some of these containers. And where do we go from here? So like I said, there's a lot of great work going on. We're going to continue to do our best and work together with other city departments to continue this momentum. But we do need to continue to adapt, because like I said, our bears are smart and they are adapting, and so we have to do so as well. And so really, just the first thing is engineering solutions. I'm a huge fan of engineering out human behavior where we can, because human behavior is hard to get 100% compliance on. And this photo right here was a container that was actually HOA put in themselves. It is bolted to the ground, so it can't get rolled around like a tin can, and has very sturdy material, and the top mechanism is self-latching, which I love. So anyways, it's great to see people in the community taking that initiative to put containers like that. Second, just suggestion/recommendation is mitigating all attractants. We work really hard on trash, and we've been hitting it really hard this summer.
Got crab apples.
But we have upwards of 300 crab-apple trees in the core. And so this photo right here is a picture of a bear cub in a crab-apple tree in the mall. So even if our trash is 100% locked up, there's still other attractants that are going to be enticing them into some of these population centers. Next recommendation is just ordinance revisions. I touched on some of the recycle, and I know that there are some changes coming with compost. And then last is just dedicated patrols. It's really important, these alleys need to be monitored on a daily basis, and people need to be followed up with. And so it's an ongoing process that takes just a lot of workforce, time spent, and so that's something that we need to continue to do. Any questions on this? Okay. Bear with me. Hopefully I don't have any. All right, so I'll give you, I'll preface this video real quick. This is a video in Aspen, and this was not a result of a business being negligent in any way. And so I just want to preface that in this, that this business had done everything right. But I really want to highlight why this is important for us to continue with the momentum that we're making. And in this video, you will see a sow, that's a female bear, and she is teaching her cubs how to provide for themselves.
How to order a cheese steak.
Yep, exactly.
Some dessert.
So, yeah, cubs learn a lot of their behaviors from their mom in their first one to two years. And so when we're seeing problematic behaviors like this, the reality is, is that's getting passed down to the cubs, and then it's likely that they're going to pass that on to their next generation. So it becomes an exponentially bigger problem with every generation of bears that we have. And so it's up to us to do our part to adapt and make the changes that we need to prevent that from happening.
Because bears are getting smarter, but we're not.
They are getting smarter. That's correct. And if they know that there's trash in that container, they're just, from what we've seen in the numbers this year, they're willing to put the effort forth to get inside.
I've got a question or comment from Skippy.
Okay. Go ahead, Skippy.
Yeah, thanks, guys. I'm just wondering, you know, hearing you talk about the need for in-person control, the cost, the potential interaction between human and bear, are we also keeping an eye to potential automated or technological solutions? I don't know what that would be, whether it's motion sensors and noise, you know, I assume they'd get used to anything, but are we just keeping an eye out for that stuff as well, knowing the cost, both financial and potentially human in conflict?
Yeah, absolutely. We work with CPW very closely. I'm actually attending a meeting tomorrow. We just received some funds from a state grant aimed towards bear-human conflict reduction, and we're continuing to just stay on what best practice is. And in a lot of ways, our community is a really great place to show best practice because we have such a large population of bears and so much bear activity. And so I would argue that we're able to be on the front end of a lot of the technology.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
Rachel.
Yeah, thank you for the update and the information. I live at Hunter Creek, which is a little bit of the breezeway up to the Hunter Creek Valley, and we certainly have seen them there this year. Oddly enough, we have a big crab-apple tree right in the center courtyard, which they're no longer watering because it leaks into the foundation, but one way or the other, I just keep waiting for the bear to get those top branches in our building. And they go up to the third floor to reach over, you know, they use the steps when they need to. But what I'm wondering is, could we perhaps work with the Parks Department and start talking about, just conceptually, what would a crab-apple tree replacement program in our core look like? And what could be done? I mean, it's not something you're going to do overnight or all at once, but are there areas that are the most problematic or the most, you know, and just start talking about how do we do this differently? We all know the mall will eventually need to be rebuilt. It's past due, frankly, in terms of the utilities and things like that that are failing underneath it and the size of the trees have reached. But it'd be nice to have a little bit of joint planning between the two of you, if there's not already, as to how we might think about this going forward.
Yes, and those conversations have happened, and that's one of the, one of the things that we're looking at moving forward, that once that mall gets redone, that they would be replaced.
Yeah.
In looking at the cost. And I think that's the beauty about also how we're collaborating together with the Parks Department and Environmental Health, is to really try to come together and figure out, okay, what's the best way to move forward to try to mitigate on some of these challenges that we have in town with attractants.
I believe we've changed our city codes, but I could be wrong to not have the plantings required to match the existing treescape of crab apples. And, you know, it wasn't that long ago, we moved from cottonwoods with cotton to cotton less cottonwoods. And maybe there's something we need to look at as we go in the replacement program before the malls, you know, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, and what's going to happen after the bear season, the group is going to continue to work together to try to figure out, okay, what do we need to work on next year to try to hopefully make some changes that will hopefully reduce the bear presence.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
Just a quick comment. When I said that about the bears getting smarter, it was probably, it was partly because of the conversation that was had over at the library. The gentleman that was leading the presentation was describing the fact that different types of locks and latches and handles have been not just accidentally opened, but that really it's learned behavior, and that the bears are starting to understand the difference between different knobs and such. So I wasn't just being flippant there, I was being serious. Thank you, guys, so much. Sounds like you have somewhat of a work plan, looking at new methodology coming up, and I mean, that's on the heels of kind of, Skippy and Rachel are both saying, is that if there's any, anything new that we can be doing, we want to hear from you. So thank you so much for the update.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. On our agenda, that'll bring us down to our citizens' comments and petitions. I want to remind citizens that this is an opportunity to address council on issues that are not scheduled for public hearing on our agenda, and we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. We're going to look online to start, and I have a hand up. I'm going to go to Mr. David Scruggs, if he's available.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. I'm David Scruggs. I live at 212 West Hopkins, and I'm addressing you as a resident and concerned citizen. First of all, let me thank you for your service on the council. I know that's not an easy job, but more importantly, let me thank you for the transparency and the open access you have for citizens to participate in council meetings and give you input. That brings me to my concern. My concern is the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm interested in a major development that is going, that is on the agenda for tomorrow, October 26th. But I'm out of town, and some of my neighbors are also out of town, and we want to have positive input on that major development. We found out that this meeting of the HPC is not going to be WebEx. The HPC holds two meetings a month. The first meeting is by WebEx. The second meeting is in-person only, no WebEx, no telephone participation. That's inconsistent, it's illogical, and I would also contend it's discriminatory in the sense that you have participation rights in regard to the first meeting of the HPC, but you don't have free access participation rights for the second meeting. So I attended the HPC meeting on 10/12, which was the first Wednesday of the month, the one they have by WebEx. And in the public comments section, I asked that the 10/26 meeting be made WebEx and that all meetings of the HPC be made WebEx. Ms. Simon replied that that cannot be done. I then requested that I be able to participate in the 10/26 meeting by phone. Ms. Simon said no to that. I then asked that the 20/05 West Main major development project be rescheduled to a WebEx meeting of the HPC. Ms. Simon said that that cannot be done. Then finally, a member of the HPC spoke up. Then finally, a member of the HPC spoke up and said, Ms. Simon, are you telling me that Mr. Scruggs can't participate by phone? And Ms. Simon said, no, he can't, because that doesn't work. Now ironically, Ms. Simon had participated in an HPC meeting on 9/28, which was an in-person meeting only, by phone. So we have a situation here where staff has participated by phone in an in-person meeting, but citizens can't. Then Ms. Simon went on to say that the city council had not funded the HPC for an IT person for WebEx meetings for all HPC meetings. So I said that I would take that issue to the city council. I then inquired of the city council, writing all of you concerning that situation. Skippy and Ward responded in support of WebEx meetings for the HPC and accessibility of citizens to those meetings. I'm asking you to please fund the HPC, starting tomorrow, to have WebEx meetings so that citizens can participate and also can hear the transaction of business and see the transaction of business. I want to make sure you understand something. I love Aspen, I love Colorado. I started, come here in '82, bought my first piece of property in 2001, became a full-time resident in 2014. I still practice law in my former home, Memphis, Tennessee. And I want to let you know that in Memphis and in Tennessee, I appear before boards, commissions, and courts by WebEx. And I'm absolutely astonished that Aspen does not have that accessibility while Memphis does. And I urge you to do that. That is just a use of modern technology. And so
Thank you, Mr. Scruggs.
One last sentence. The HPC is a non-elected decision-maker. They make decisions concerning property rights, impacts on citizens and neighborhoods, and they need to be open, transparent, invite citizen participation. Thank you for hearing me out on this.
Thank you, Mr. Scruggs. Online, I see another hand up from Chuck. Chuck, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
We got you.
Great, thank you for allowing me to make a few comments here. So I'm here to comment on the proposed tax issue 2A.
Chuck, will you please state your full name for the record, please?
Chuck Frias. I'm a 48-year resident
Thank you.
And a business owner. So this is, it's a very complicated issue, but I take exception to a lot of the comments that I've seen in the paper from council members and others that I think misrepresent what we're really dealing with here. The fact is, this tax is being proposed to be taxed to about 15% of our sales tax base. So when I see comments that say, quote, "It will create greater equity between those generating demand for services," and other such statements, it's just factually wrong. And I, other statements here, and I'm taking this from a letter, Rachel, that I think you sent to the editor. I don't think it's been published yet, like, that I've seen, so I'm not picking on you, but just to highlight the complexity of this, and I think the misunderstanding by council and I think some citizens. You made a comment here, quote, "Local restaurants and retailers don't have homeowner associations that can raise dues to attract needed workers." And most of, a lot of these properties that you're proposing this tax on do not have HOAs to raise fees to attract workers. So that's an example of just, I think, an incorrect statement and misleading some of the voters. You know, there was a committee in many of the lodges, you know, we're all in opposition to this, because it's the first time I've observed in many, many years that the council has been kind of in opposition with one of its biggest and longest taxpaying base. Many of these condominiums have been paying taxes for 50 years, far longer than anybody else in this community. And so to single them out is just unfair and wrong. And so when ordinance nine was created, and I think you misclassified what you call the STR Classic, which were these 50-year historic condo rentals, along with a west-end rental home that's renting for five to 10x that nightly rate, I think that was just a big mistake. And it's punishing the wrong people, and we're not collecting from the other 85% of the tax base and so many people that potentially could help us fund the solutions that we need. So the lodging managers, many of us that have tried to work with you to come up with a sustainable, fair solution, I don't feel like we've really been listened to. So now we're in opposition, and I hope we'll get to a point where we can all work together to come up with a sustainable, fair, long-term solution for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Tori, may I?
I'd like to respond.
Hold on one second. Rachel, then Skippy, then Ward.
Chuck, I respect your contributions in this community over many years. We've known each other probably for close to 40 of those years. And I disagree with your comments that you've just made. I could take apart the letter that you and a number of condo hotel managing partners wrote and sent to the papers, and was highly disparaging of the city trying to use the terms like siphoning off some of the revenues for critically needed infrastructure, as opposed to understanding or taking the time to go through the city's budget, as we've been doing over the past few weeks, and looking at the tremendous shortfalls we have on capital that will continue going forward in the future as we try to service the guests who come to our community and offer the amenities and the value they expect for the money they're spending. It is true that restaurants, retailers, traditional lodging, that is a hotel that rents by the night and the units are not owned individually by property owners, pay a residential, excuse me, those types of businesses pay commercial property tax rates. And when you pay a commercial property tax rate on all of our small businesses in town, whether it's an office holder, or whether it's a restaurant, or whether it's a retail shop, they do not have homeowner's associations like the Gant, or the Alps, or the North of Nell, or the Aspen Square, to turn back to and ask to raise the rent another 150 a month, the HOA dues, so that they can compete and attract employees. Our small businesses, our remaining small businesses, and restaurants, and office spaces, all pay commercial property tax. And that's roughly four times, I use the number two and a half, but it's really closer to four times higher tax on those businesses than on the property owners at the Alps, or the Gans, or these other places. Now, the important part is that it's not just city services that are affected by that. These businesses are paying four times that much on their pass-through leases to the ambulance district, who's asking for a tax increase this year. They're asking, they're paying four times as much to the hospital district, who serve all our guests. They're paying four times as much to the library district, and four times as much on their value to the school district. And let alone, they're paying four times as much on the value of their leases and the businesses that they own within those, to Rafta, the company bringing all the employees into town. I think the 5% that we have asked the voters to consider adding to the rentals of the condo hotels is quite reasonable. And if you take anyone, look in the Colorado Sun today, they have a wonderful article on nine different resort communities that are all asking for Steamboat Springs, a 9% STR tax, not the 5% that the city of Aspen is asking. And communities across the West are facing this crisis, and I think it's time to react. Should this question fail, and folks want to try to reinvigorate some other new measure to try to fund affordable housing, then I think you're going to hear the exact opposite argument from all those businesses that are on those leases that are paying the commercial property tax already for those services. I don't want to pass a tax, nobody wants to have to ask for a tax, but at the end of the day, you have to address the realities and the business future that our community has. There's a reason why Rafta is buying hotels in Glenwood Springs for their companies, for their people. There's a reason that a Kroger is buying all the rental property they can out of Carbondale in order to be able to film their stores. If we want a viable community going forward, both committed members and not just two-year have-a-party participants in our economy, we are going to need more housing. And that's why I've been willing to put this on the ballot, and that's why I will support everything I put in a letter or a public statement. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Skippy and Ward, maybe briefer comments there? This is not necessarily a venue for discussion right now. Skippy, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I actually have a hand up about the previous comment from David. But just really briefly, Chuck, I'm not here to tell you your view is right or wrong. I think that's what elections are for, and that's fine, there can be different views. The one thing that I would just say from being in the room is the idea that you weren't listened to is just inaccurate. I mean, you're a smart guy, and you know that listening does not necessarily mean agreement. And I would just point to the 5% and 10% rather than 13% or 21%. And I would point to the three different types of STR permits as direct evidence of listening. None of us got what we initially went in for, but that's what consensus is. So I'll just leave it there, and you know, vote and advocate as you will. The comment I wanted to make back to David's for the rest of us is, I really appreciate that David has brought this concern forward, and he's brought it to kind of each of us incrementally. My understanding is that we chose to leave a discretion for decision about in-person versus, in-person only, web-only, or hybrid to the chairs. And I think that's a decision that we need to stand behind. If however, we are actually through funding, as David has suggested, the difference between being hybrid or not, I would certainly suggest that we remove that barrier, fund whatever is needed to make sure that it is available. And I do want to just draw our attention to the sort of weirdness of the idea of sometimes being in-person and sometimes not. That's something that I hadn't considered as a possibility when we designated that. And I understand why you may want to only do in-person. And I, as much as I may personally disagree with that, I can understand why a chair would want that and want to give them the agency to run their meeting that way. But this sort of one foot in, one foot out, that's happening, I think that's maybe outside the scope of at least what I thought was possible. And I would ask that we revisit if that's an option we want to leave available. I mean, we've all said we really, you know, transparency first, so I think it's a good concern for David to raise.
Thanks, Skippy. Ward?
I'll reserve my comments to David Scruggs and my council comments, but for Rachel, did you share your letter to the editor with Chuck Frias?
No, it was online.
It was published.
It was published online, but it wasn't in the imprint copy.
Okay.
That's what he's referring to. I noticed that myself.
That was just, that was a process or procedural question that I had. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'm going to continue with citizens' comments. I'm going to look in-room. If there's members of the public that wish to comment this evening, come on up. Hi.
I am, my name is Julie Hardman, and I am an Aspen resident. I actually live over in Smuggler Park. And I am also a member of the advocates of Aspen Open Space and Trails. And I have Howie Mallory and Ann Mullins here with me. They are also members of the same group. So we just wanted to be here tonight to express our support of the ballot issue 2B, which is the reauthorization of the half-cent sales tax towards Aspen Open Space and Trails. And just a reminder, this is not a new tax, so I'm hoping that this is an easy decision to make, to continue this funding for our Aspen Open Space and Trails. And just to reiterate the fact that this funding is so important, and it has funded many projects in our community. It not only helps maintain and repair our trails, which are used for hiking, biking, and commuting, but it also helps preserve our wildlife habitat, it preserves our open space areas such as Sky Mountain Park, John Denver Sanctuary, and Cozy Point Ranch. Cozy Point is a perfect example of funding that is needed for existing maintenance of existing structures out there. We have housing out there, employees out there, and they need to be in a safe environment. So a lot of this funding goes towards things like that as well. I think that to continue the funding with this sales tax is also so important for our future. It not only is our, making decisions for our future recreation, but also continuing to protect our wildlife habitat and our existing streams and rivers that flow through our community. So I think it's an easy yes for 2B, but we're looking for your support. And Tori, thank you for your comments that I think were today in support of issues 2A and 2B. So, am I missing anything important? I don't, do you guys have any comments?
November 8th is the deadline.
Sorry?
November 8th is the deadline.
Yes, it is true. I'm sure some of you have already voted, but we're hoping that those of you that have not will continue to support this tax initiative.
Don't we have an ask? That the city approved the resolution?
Yes. I have officially asked that. As we were hoping. Yeah.
No, you weren't.
So we are hoping to have the support of you all for the resolution of this tax initiative.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
You know, and just let me take one, one quick second. Elections and campaigns and taxes and questions like this often lose sight and focus on the real issue. And so I want to say to all three of you, because you've long been supporters of Aspen's Open Space Trails Recreation and the like, and so it's not just this ballot question that you guys are turning up to come support, I want to say thank you for your unending support in these issues. And it's not just this renewal that is, that is bringing you out to say this, you've been working on this for quite a long time. So on behalf of Aspen's community, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's really interesting now, Julie, on the Open Space Board.
Howie, pull the microphone right up to you.
Oh, sorry. Julie's been on the, on the board for, open, City Open Space and Trails Board for five years. I've been on it since the inception, and it's really nice, though, that this vote renewal coincides with really the next generation that's so committed to the mission of the City's Open Space and Trails Program. So you won't see much more of me, but you'll see a lot of her in the future, which is the way it should be, because that's the continuum of being responsible for the quality of life, both for residents, both for visitors, and both for the environment and wildlife in particular. One of the great success stories has been the stormwater program, where Parks and Open Space has partnered with the city's open stormwater engineering department. For example, the Jenny Adair property, as well as the property down on Maroon Creek, just below the golf course. So I just wanted you to know that it's more than just trails, et cetera. It's really the totality of the environment. Thanks.
Thank you, well said. Any others?
No, thank you all for your, your service and for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And another call for in-room, citizens that wish to make comment this evening on items not for public hearing this evening? Seeing none, and none online, I'll bring it back to council table. This brings us to special orders of the day. This is an opportunity for a council member and mayor's comments. Start with council members. Skippy, since you are on the WebEx here, or Zoom, I guess we're now zooming, so since you're on Zoom, why don't you go ahead and start us off, if you could?
Sure, I'll be brief. I kind of already made I kind of already made my comments about HPC, so just like to, you know, consider, consider that. And then other than that, just coming up on Election Day. So just a reminder to everyone to vote. You can vote by mail, generally until about the 28th or 27th is what's suggested. There's a drop box on Main Street, in front of the Board of County Commissioners building. And then you can vote in-person at the B O C C building and the J C C, also on Main Street. And the J is where you would do that on Election Day. And if you are not yet registered, pickinvotes.org. Someone correct me if I'm wrong about the org. And you can, you can do so up to same day. So this will be, as they always are, incredibly impactful elections, but arguably more so with the state of our nation. And so do your duty, get out there, and be heard.
Thank you.
I have no comments this evening. I'll wait till we have some other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward?
Yeah, thank you. I, I feel this council has really been dedicated towards transparency and openness and encouraging participation from citizens in all matters. I am disappointed that there's inconsistent access to an appointed board. The HPC and I, in the strongest terms possible, want all meetings of the HPC to be open to WebEx, WebEx Zoom, or virtual participation. Thank you, David, for bringing this to our attention. And it particularly irks me that it was laid at the city council's feet that it's our fault that we did not provide funding when we, in fact, have been advocating for participation, communication, openness, and transparency. And indeed, last night in budget meetings, we approved for one more FTE for communication. So I think it's inconsistent to have some meetings open and some not. And I strongly encourage HPC to have all of their meetings open to virtual participation.
You know, I should second that. I apologize, Mr. Scruggs, for not adding on. I knew Ward was going to address it. But if funding from this council is the issue, I would move that we use contingency funds tonight to make sure the HPC and the ComDev Department know that they have their funding available to make these all public meetings. But I, and I don't think we received a request that said, if you don't do this, we're only going to televise half the meetings, or we're only going to have that access for half the meetings. I certainly don't remember that. And had they asked for additional money so that they could all be by Zoom or WebEx, I would certainly approve it.
John, your comments this evening?
Just a couple little tidbits. This was on NPR last week. The Alaska snow crab season has canceled, was canceled, as officials investigate the disappearance of an estimated 1 billion crabs. It's a huge blow to American seafood industry. For the first time in state history, has done this. And then closer to home, our drought continues. Colorado Sun reported that hydropower production was 20% down last year as the upper Colorado River system finished the water year of 2022. So not only are we experiencing the drought, we also are down 20% of our hydropower.
Thanks, John.
Sure.
Comments for me this evening, very brief? I wanted to just echo some comments that I made earlier today in a Chamber Resort Association meeting this morning. And that was, I think everybody needs to take a look around and appreciate the fact that you're here in Aspen, Colorado. Life is good. We work very hard, all of us. We work hard on issues. We work hard on relationships. But when you think about it and you put it into perspective, we are very lucky where we are and what we do. You know, I speak for this council when I say that we are representative for you and of you. We are very accessible, and we intend to stay that way. In election seasons, as I was saying earlier, you know, a lot of times, things can get lost in the dialogue. We all see the campaigns that are going on TV. Luckily, that's not reflective of local. But you hear some of the tone and tenor in some of our local issues as well. And I really ask for civility, for openness and honesty when we're dealing with each other. I think that is paramount. And all of that is in the framework, again, of, like I said, we are very fortunate to be where we are. With that said, as I often remind people from this seat, you know, mental health is a very real issue in our community. If you or somebody you know is having any struggles or just needs somebody to talk to, there are some great resources. Number one is a phone call away, and that's the Aspen Hope Center, the Hope Center, 925-5858. But if you need more resources than that, go online to aspenstrong.org. There are great resources. A lot of them are free to the public. So please, if you or someone you know needs anybody to talk to or anything else, use those resources. Last thing I'll say is vote. Your ballots have arrived by mail. If you are going to mail in your ballot this year, there are many people that recommend a full five days to a week ahead of Election Day, which is the 8th. Get your ballot in the mail early. As we know, you know, from workforce shortages to transportation costs and the like, the mail doesn't move any faster these days than it used to. It moves only slower. Get it in the mail, if that's your method. Your best, best option is to show up and vote in person or drop it off in a drop box. So please, take, take part. As I said in my letter today, it is your right, your responsibility, and in a lot of cases, our honor to be able to vote. Your voice does matter. So please, make sure to vote in this year's elections.
Tori, I'd like to add one thing that.
Oh.
There is a new 988 number for suicide prevention or suicide intervention that has just gone into effect. And on, on another item, I think if there's something in our council's power and ability to get funding or make the HPC meeting available to Zoom for tomorrow's meeting, I want support from this council to do that.
Until we answer Ward's question, I would remind people that it takes two stamps if you are putting your postage, vote, vote in the mail. And if, for any reason, you haven't received a ballot, check with the clerk's office. They will void the one that they had mailed before and give you a new ballot to be able to vote. So, or if you, you void it yourself by making a mistake and filling in the wrong dot, you can take it to the clerk's office, and they will void it and give you a new ballot to make sure your voice is heard. Thank you.
I'll look for an appropriate place for us to address this item.
Okay.
I'll let you know. Okay, let's move on. Agenda amendments this evening? I'm seeing none. No changes in the agenda. That'll bring us to city managers' comments, then.
Mr. Mayor, whether you find it appropriate to discuss the comments from citizen participation, public comment, both the Assistant City Attorney and I have comments regarding the situation. Thank you.
Then I'm going to request that we add it to our agenda at the end-of-action items. That's okay with the city manager?
Certainly. My, we, we have no qualms about where it appears on the agenda. I do think you need to receive legal advice, and so we may request that you have executive session before voting on anything tonight.
Thank you. That'll bring us to a board reports. It's an opportunity for members of council to share brief board reports. Any current updates that you want to share?
No, we didn't have an actual meeting last week. Pardon me.
We did have a core board meeting. I think it was the second one with now Dallas as our new CEO of Core and discussing adding some citizen members to the, to the core board. And there was a discussion about initiating a national advisory board to, to extend the reach and networking of, of Core. Thank you.
Thanks, Ward. John?
Skippy, you mind if I do Nordic council?
Go for it.
Okay, it's quick. Nordic council, mowing has commenced in Snowmass Village to prepare the ski tracks for snow. Staff returns November 1st to really get things going. And as far as the snowmaking project, they're going to present that to the county commissioners before they take it anywhere, anywhere else. Are you going to be talking about the cast meeting?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that at our cast get-together last week in Glenwood, that Crested Butte did pass an all-electric construction code requiring no new natural gas hookups, and also that Summit County spends $2.8 million a year on fire mitigation. I think that's something we should be very aware of. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Quick board reports for me. Number one was that, yes, this morning was the Acro Board meeting. Conversation, the presentation today was actually by City of Aspen staff. So we had Trish Aragon and Pete Rice and a few others that were presenting on parking. There is a discussion coming up November 1st at City Council Work Session that deals with both the Living Lab update and information and possible direction, future directions, as well as the passes that are out there, whether it's lodging passes, construction passes, and the like. There are passes, I believe the number that I saw today is in the thousands for parking passes and permits. And it was an interesting conversation, you know, but it really, it really showed how much different people have different takes on different issues. And whether that's from their own personal perspective or from their professional perspective can often differ greatly. Just to give you an example of that, when we talked about parking in the downtown Core, a couple of items that came up. One was a report back from staff that even this past summer with the Living Lab in place, we were able to maintain our target of 85% occupancy. What that means is 15% available parking in the downtown Core. That oftentimes is, is broken down or associated as one open parking spot per block. And that was according to the data that they had looked at and the observations on the street, literally, being out there for many hours, making counts, was that that 15% of availability was maintained. That was interesting in the conversation because different parties at the meeting had different takes. There were some members that were commenting that, for example, they thought perhaps there shouldn't be a four-hour limit and that we should let people park for longer than that. Other comments reflected that absolutely this past summer, they did not have an issue parking at all. Might have taken them just a moment or two longer, but really was not an issue. Then you have other people that are advocating on behalf of businesses or lodges that are still saying that we, they desperately need those passes that they've received for their guests in the past. So a lot of great conversation, a lot of work still to go into it, and it's going to, that particular conversation is going to come back to this council November 1st. Very interesting information, though. I think the same presentation is going to be made tomorrow at CCLC, perhaps. I did not go to cast because I actually was down in Denver at CML. And while that's not a board report, I just wanted to let everybody know I was attending CML meetings in Denver. And it was a, a meeting of mayors to get together and talk about leadership and doing this job the best that we can, learning from each other, learning from each other's experiences. We didn't really talk too much about issues and items of the like. We talked really about whether it's effective meetings or effective leadership and, and communication amongst mayors, talking about different issues. Thinking, there is a next-gen meeting for boards and report updates. There is a next-gen meeting that is scheduled for tomorrow night. And I have another one on Thursday that escapes me right now, but.
EOTC.
Thank you. We have an EOTC.
4:00 PM here.
All of us have an EOTC meeting on Thursday. Thank you for that. With that, we will conclude board reports and move on. Next on our agenda is our consent calendar. The consent calendar tonight consists of Resolution Number 104, which is an engineering design change order for the Maroon Creek Pipeline Rehabilitation, Resolution Number 116, which is an as-needed emergency raw water pipeline repair services contract, and Resolution Number 119 for plow slash sanding trucks replacement. Are there any items that council members wish to have further discussion or have pulled? I see a hand up from Skippy.
Oh, yeah, I just, board reports. You guys mentioned.
Sorry.
That's okay. No actual, and you guys covered cast and Nordic, which I was at. Just wanted to let you guys know if you have any feedback. Obviously, EOTC tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Thursday. I also have Northwest COG on Thursday, so if anyone has anything for that. And then the only other thing that I just wanted to mention from the cast meeting is there was some really good conversation about Glenwood's new program to convert old small lodges to affordable housing. You guys probably saw the newspaper article, Rafa bought 43, or bought and converted to 43 affordable housing units. And I don't know if we ever talked about considering that as part of our affordable housing strategic plan or things to look at. It's something I've thought about for a long time. I know others of you have, because we've talked about it. And we're late to the party. We've lost most of our small lodges already, unfortunately, but not all of them. I mean, I think just where, you know, John is with the, you know, Tyrolian and others, there are still a number of them. And I've always sort of wondered, from the broader community perspective, why the, the zoning of lodges allows for anything other than lodging or affordable housing? We just see these continued, you know, conversions to free-market residential that, that, from my perspective, is not serving community. So I just wanted to bring that into our consciousness and suggest it's something that we may want to give a look at over the next year, now that there's a model in the valley, as another means of delivering in partnership without the city's, you know, dollar or hammer, you know, opportunities for affordable housing with, you know, whether it's local businesses or governments or et cetera in town. So I think that's something we should, we should look at. That's all.
Any items on the consent calendar you would like further discussion on?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any other council members?
I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Do we have a roll call vote for the consent calendar?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazzaro.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Tori.
Yes. That brings us to notice of call-ups this evening. Our first one is an HPC approval for 132 West Hopkins. This is conceptual major development, relocation, and variations.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. For the record, Ben Anderson, Deputy Community Development Director. And I'm covering ComDev staff tonight on the three cases that you have in front of you this evening. This is a call-up notice from a decision made by the Historic Preservation Commission regarding 132 West Hopkins. It was approved unanimously, four to zero. This is a landmark property that had an existing addition in the rear, and the, the project proposes some, some changes to the site, but kind of replacing the addition to the rear. They were granted some setback variations in the rear and on the west yard, and then a previously. a previously contemplated small floor area bonus of about 117 square feet. So staff was recommending approval of this, went to HPC. HPC unanimously approved and recommend the council uphold HPC's decision.
Thank you. Council members, questions?
Just a quick one. Didn't Dennis Murray used to live on this property?
I'm not aware of Mr. Murray's presence on this property or not.
Pretty sure he did.
It's perhaps likely, John.
I have no interest in calling up tonight.
Nor me.
Thank you. Ben, I'm not seeing any action for a call up of 132 West Hopkins at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second call up notice this evening is for 413 East Main Street. We know this property better as Jing. Jing requested HPC review for some minor modifications to their north facade, actually the two facades. This is a nonhistoric addition to a landmark property. And the changes are pretty minor. It was removing, proposing removal of a couple courses of brick to allow, you know, floor to ceiling, sliding windows, doors to access the patio space. And again, HPC unanimously approved this request and staff is recommending council uphold HPC's decision.
Thank you for that.
I am interested in upholding the council, HPC decision.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Ben, I do not believe we have an action for call up of 413 East Main.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Ben.
Should we launch into first readings?
Say again?
Should we launch into first readings?
Yes. We are at first readings on our agenda. The first one is ordinance number 17, Burlingame Triangle Parcel Major Subdivision.
Mr. Mayor and Council, again, for the record, Ben Anderson with Community Development. Kevin Reyes, Planner at Apartments, the lead planner on this request. The City of Aspen is the applicant for this land use application. And this is an important piece of the land assembly for the eventual lumberyard property. And there, you know, I think on the face of this, and and we'll talk about some of the, we'll get into a fairly descriptive discussion of this at second reading with the applicant and the applicant's representative. But from staff's perspective, the really interesting part of this request for the subdivision from the larger conservation easement that's related to the to the Burlingame property is that this piece of land, it's a triangle shaped parcel, and so you'll you'll hear us refer pretty regularly to the as a as a triangle parcel. But this is a piece of the Burlingame Conservation Easement, and it has been long contemplated as a future use related to affordable housing, connected to Annie Mitchell, connected to circulation for affordable housing. But one of the things that made this complicated was that the Aspen Valley Land Trust, at the time of the conservation easement and, you know, the other parties that were involved at the time, the the shape of this parcel, while it's described and and the uses, the future uses were described, the boundaries of this parcel were not defined. And so from staff's perspective, a very important aspect of this process has been the the full agreement of the Aspen Valley Land Trust, of the shape of this parcel, the use of this parcel. And that was a really important aspect of of staff's review and our consideration of this particular piece of property as it relates to the rest of the conservation even. So I don't have a lot more to talk about this evening, other than this is a subdivision request. It's part of the the lumberyard land assembly. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you would have for either staff or the applicant team at second reading. And I recommend passage of ordinance number 17 at first reading.
Council members, this is an opportunity for requests for information for second reading.
I see no real questions here. It's pretty straightforward. Is there any continuity issues with this? It's already annexed into the city.
That's correct.
And so it's a city subdivision.
That's correct.
Okay. And this has been looked at as one of the critical pieces to create affordable housing at the lumberyard. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm very supportive of this going forward.
Thank you. If there are no other requests, then this is a first reading. Take a motion to read.
I move we read ordinance 17, series 2022.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for reading of ordinance number 17?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes.
Ordinance number 17, series of 2022, in ordinance of the Aspen City Council approving a major subdivision for the property legally described as Lot 1A, final subdivision plat of Lot 1A Burlingame Ranch, according to the final plat thereof, recorded October 10th, 2005, in Book 75 at page 46, at reception number 515-997, County of Pickens, State of Colorado.
I move we adopt ordinance 17 on first reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for ordinance number 17 on first reading. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
And yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. There are no public hearings this evening. That'll bring us down to action items on our agenda. The first one is resolution number 120 of 2022, Aspen Mountain Tots exemption and three year lease request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, Diane Foster, City Manager's Office. I am here today with a resolution, a proposal for a three year lease agreement with Aspen Mountain Tots. The relevant, most relevant points of this is that this would be an agreement to operate four days a week. And it includes a commitment, it does include, and which is different from the what the Kids First Board has recommended and council has supported in the past. While not meeting the letter of operating five days a week, Ms. Don Ryan has committed to adding two more weeks, which will add 128 more childcare days. And lastly, I will call your attention to the pros and cons on the second, second page of this that provides some some support as well as some reasons why you may not want to approve this. Thank you.
Questions, comments, council members? Rachel, if you want.
I've looked at these pros and cons and the need we have in our community. And it's really challenging to know that you have a taxpayer funded facility that I can't remember, I think it was a million nine, the city had to pay the school district to buy that building, plus buy the land for the ball fields and maintain them for 10 years as part of the deal to secure that. And then not see it operating five days a week, you know, to to see the taxpayers, say, pay for the Aspen Recreation Center and then say, well, it's really too hard to run it seven days a week. We're only going to run it four days a week or or other or other facilities. And I think a lot of our workers there would would enjoy the break as well. But I I am going to say I look at childcare differently. I know there is dramatic need going forward. I know there are challenges with retention. I realize there's tremendous challenges with housing, which is connected to retention and the ability for people to work at at various job levels. And so while it is a difficult decision, I appreciate where the operators have gone forward to try to increase the service levels for the community. And certainly the hours that go longer in the day are very beneficial to a working class that has mixed schedules within our community, whether you start early or you you go late. And so in that sense, I am going to support this request. I think it's the right thing to do. I think anybody in our board is aware of this. We we tend to really try to follow what's going on in the state and other communities. But there is a childcare provider shortage of qualified people across the state in every community. And I think we're very lucky and fortunate to have the operators that we have and who are well respected. So I I think there's enough conditions here that qualify to it coming very close to what we've been looking for that I can support it going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Any comments this evening?
Yeah, our council has a top three tier goal of providing increased capacity and accessibility of childcare. It's it's a disappointment that I think we will have classrooms dark for three days a week, but I think it's better than having classrooms dark seven days a week. There are a few more hours, three hours a week more with this. This council has made funds available for free rent, for increasing the number of interns for childcare and to help fund the wages for childcare providers. A perfect situation for me would be childcare five or seven days a week. I will support four days a week in this resolution.
Thanks, Ward. Yep, go right ahead, John.
Yeah, I think we all would have liked to see the space used five days a week, but we can't afford to lose another childcare provider. I'd like to thank Dawn for at least working with us to expand her hours and I support this going forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Skip, any comments here? Not necessary, but just wondering?
Yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, I I support this moving forward. You know, I think this is an example of having the right intention, not nailing it the first time, learning as we go and continuing to make improvements, which is the best we can do and what we hope to do every day. So I will support progress over perfection and know that we're going to continue to work to make it better.
Thanks, Skip.
I would make a motion to approve resolution number 120 of 2022.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? We have a roll call vote for resolution number 120, please?
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Torrey.
Yes. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you, Diane, for all your challenges working through this and to all those who've come today. I appreciate your time here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rachel.
Diane. That'll bring us on our agenda to resolution number 121. This is supporting ballot issue 2A. And I, well, I don't believe we have presentation for this. This is a resolution in our packet. Okay. So is there any council discussion? Any comments at this time? Skip, can I start with you if you have any?
Yeah, thumbs up is is all I needed to say. I'm fully supportive. I think we all understand how important this is for our community, how much our community values this, as this is a home run.
Thank you, Skip. Ward, any comments on resolution 121?
Yeah. The stresses that shared terminals have put on communities, not only in Colorado, but throughout the world, are causing working residents to to lose their housing, to be displaced. I think throughout the Mountain West, in many communities in Colorado, attempts are being made to invite our guests to pay a next size tax to help support local workers and mitigate the impacts of those tourist visitations. I don't think this is a perfect solution. I don't think anybody has come up with a perfect solution, but doing nothing loses ground, so I I do support this. And I I encourage everybody to support 2A and vote for 2A in the affirmative to help retain the fabric and identity of our community.
Thanks, Ward. John?
Yeah, I I think Rachel actually explained this issue pretty comprehensively earlier in her comments. And I just wanted to add that, you know, on a very basic level, this tax that's being proposed is paid by visitors to our fair city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel?
This is a a complex issue in a way, and in another way, it's not. Aspen has always tried to have growth pay its own way and growth impacts to be mitigated. I think I've already mentioned, but really would point people towards looking at the Colorado Sun newspaper today. The article is Voters Across Colorado's High Country Will Weigh In On New Taxes On Short-Term Rentals And Affordable Housing Proposals. And the byline under that is As Many As 14 Colorado Municipalities And Counties Will Ask Voters Next Month To Increase Or Repurpose Taxes On Short-Term Rental Properties To Help Fund Affordable Housing. This is a crisis that is occurring across our state and resort communities are perhaps particularly hard hit. I've lived here since 1978 and I I love Aspen. I love the community. And watching it slowly slip away, watching people lose their leases and not being able to find anything within 50 miles, that's heartbreaking. Knowing that our community depends on volunteers for so many activities, for so many nonprofits, and those people are losing out and are unable to really pull in the community that they want. This is about succession planning for a town. As we pass away, as we move along, as the free market homes that some friends were once able to buy are now being sold to the second home market. I had a coworker when I was doing advertising distribution for many years in Aspen Activity Center, and he worked hard and saved his money and pulled all his retirement money out and was able to purchase a home, I think around in 2006 or '07 in Carbondale, little place. And he's moved away from the area to where his wife's family was, things like that. But only recently he came back to visit and make his mind up about what he wanted to do. And he said Carbondale is just not the same. The people aren't there anymore. The locals are gone in Carbondale. And he put his home on the market and the home he bought for $430,000 just closed for 1.165. And so I can only look at that and say the type of job and the type of person who was able to buy a home 35 miles from here will not be able to buy a home within 35 miles from here or 40 miles from here or 60 miles from here. I looked through the real estate listings this summer in terms of having a small report with the Rotary, Aspen Rotary, and could report that the prices for rental or purchase of homes in silt and rifle had gone up over 40% from the year 2021 to 2022. of homes in silt and rifle had gone up over 40% from the year 2021 to 2022. That's a radical change. And it's worth noting that the sign on the Wendy's in Glenwood Springs says, starting at $19 bucks an hour, that the competition for the workforce that used to live in the free market, that no longer lives in the free market in our valley, is gone, and it's not coming back anytime soon. This is about the mountain rescue expression, if you want to get saved, you have to participate in your own rescue. And this is about participating in our own rescue as a community, to be able to have volunteers, to still desire housing that allows families to settle here and not just worker dorms. We've always prided ourselves on being a real town that didn't have its sidewalks roll up at night, and we didn't have character actors pretending they were the locals with a little name tag on them that said where they really came from. So I'm putting my all into this, and I'm asking the community to have some faith as well. There's times when we've walked away from things that could have been great for us. You know, we as a community turned down purchasing the old Motherlode restaurant for $3.4 million because it was a little more than the appraisal. And six months later, it sold for $8.6 million. What an opportunity lost to have augmented the Wheeler, to help the Wheeler. And a number of years ago, we did have an opportunity to perhaps fix our entrance and the bridge that will now require repair work constantly until we have a new bridge. And we thought somehow that just what we had 20 years ago would last forever. It would suffice forever. It would be somewhat workable. But we found out with what we're doing to the West End neighborhoods, we found out that what we've done with the backup of traffic and something that literally drives our workforce away is that entrance. We're not even on the state funding plans. We're not on the 10-year plan. How do we get this fixed? So I think it's important to not think about just what you have today and will this still be good six months from now, but will it still work for us five years from now? Will it still work for us 10 years from now? That's what this election is about. It's about our community's future. And so with all my heart, I ask people to please vote yes on 2A. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Skippy?
I realize I'm a dummy and switched to my head 2A and 2B before people spoke. So the home run comment was in relation to the open space, so you could attribute that there. You know, this one, I think, is a little bit more complicated, but I'm in agreement with all of you that we need to support this as a community and that I'm personally going to be voting for it. You know, I have a unique and in-depth perspective on this. I work in the vacation rental space, so I get to see this from all sides. This is by no means a perfect tax. You know, I've been on record and I've been at our meetings talking about how vacation rentals are sort of the last bastion of affordable lodging in Aspen. And the tourist of today is the citizen of tomorrow and not wanting to artificially price out those we want in our community. And we have to wrestle with the fact that this tax will, to a not insignificant degree, do that, artificially inflate the rates. I will also say I have, you know, clients we work with, not in the city but in the county, who are being hit to some degree in the pocketbook, although over an all-time high by a significant amount over the last couple of years from some of the county regulations. And I think this is just a moment where we need to look beyond our selfish or individual interest to the broader need of the community. We need to balance what our problems are now versus tomorrow. We're going to have to accept a marginal increase, however undesired, for guests coming into our community to make sure we actually have a community there to greet them when they arrive. As business, we need to be willing to accept a small difficulty to, whether it's our guests or our clients, to make sure that our businesses will even have the opportunity to exist with workers in a number of years. This one's not perfect, but it is necessary. We are in the greatest housing crisis of Aspen's history, and that's saying a lot because it's never been easy, but it's going to be getting harder and harder. We need every tool on the table. And so I enthusiastically support this, however complicated and intention that may be. And I would ask those in our community to do that as well, because if we take the position that, you know, we will only stop emitting our CO2 if everybody else in the world does, well, we're all going to die at the hand of climate change. And the same thing is true here. Maybe it's not perfect in the distribution of this tax to some's eyes, and yet if we who are impacted in some way don't stand up to do the right thing, the entire community as well as ourselves is going to be hurt by it. So let's all go and vote yes. I will.
Thanks, Skippy. I agree with my fellow council members' comments, and the only thing I can add to it really is that this being on the ballot is direct response to our community. We heard very clearly that our community was looking for both regulation of short-term rentals, but also this possible tax to take care of some of the impacts. One thing that came through as well for me in our outreach and our surveys was that our community was advocating for a moderate, which this is, and tiered tax, which this is. So I think this council has done its job in returning back to its citizenry what the citizens have requested and supported. I will be supporting this this evening and in my personal life will be supporting 2A as well. With that, we could take a motion for Resolution 121.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution 121, 2A ballot question, resolution of support.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution 121, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes. Thank you all.
That'll bring us to Resolution Number 122. This is support for ballot issue number 2B. Again, we don't have staff presentation. We do have audience members that have spoken earlier for their support, so we're going to keep this at the council table. Is there any council member that wishes to make some comments regarding 2B?
Yeah, Torrey?
I'll start with Rachel.
I think that for our viewing public, I'm going to read this excellently-written resolution, and I think that says it all. So in "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Aspen, Colorado, in support of City of Aspen Ballot Issue 2B: Extension of Existing .5-Cent Sales Tax for Parks and Open Space," a measure on the November 2020 state ballot. "Whereas the renewal of the City Open Space and Trails Half-Cent Tax in perpetuity will on the November 22 ballot, November 2022 ballot is ballot question 2B. Whereas for the past 25 years, the half-cent sales tax has allowed the City of Aspen to acquire, improve, and maintain its open space and trail system, parks, and recreation facilities. Whereas a yes vote on City of Aspen ballot question 2B will protect and maintain our open space parks such as Sky Mountain, John Denver Sanctuary, and Cozy Point Ranch. Whereas a yes vote on City of Aspen ballot 2B will contribute to the protection of our wildlands, undeveloped open space, wildlife, wildlife habitat, and rivers and streams. And a yes vote on City ballot question 2B," I don't know who wrote this, "will fund the construction and maintenance of sports fields, Nordic skiing, hiking, biking trails, and other recreational amenities." So I'm going to skip ahead a little. "It will expand and enhance our existing facilities while consolidating and optimizing their use. It will maintain and/or refurbish parks and other recreational facilities and our malls. And will provide trails for bicycles, e-bikes, walkers, and be part of the solution to traffic congestion and potentially a little more safety on our trails as well. And will allow the city to adopt changing recreational needs, priorities, and trends in our community. It will secure our open space and recreational choices for the future and will protect the places our children enjoy, treasure, and will recreate into in the future." So I'd like to thank those who've worked on this and offer my full support for City question 2B. It is a renewal of a tax that I was able to place on the ballot in the year 2000 and which has done wonderful things for us. We tend to forget. It bought all, helped buy Smuggler Mountain, it added to the North Sar Preserve, and it preserved the little park, what is it, right in town behind the hotel in NATO?
Francis Whittaker.
Francis Whittaker Park, which would have been sold for a free-market home if that tax had not passed. So thank you very much to the Aspen community.
Council members, any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to re-stress that this is an existing tax. It is not a new tax. Please vote yes on 2B.
Yeah, the amenities that open space and trails provide the community, I can't express how valuable they are. I use trails and open spaces just about every day, and I think it's one of the things that really separate this community from other communities around the world. So I enthusiastically support extension of this tax.
Why don't you make the motion, Ward, on this resolution?
I move we adopt Resolution 122, series of 2022, in support of ballot issue 2B.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for Resolution 122, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes, enthusiastically.
Counselor Mazero?
So enthusiastically.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thanks.
This brings us to item D under Action Items, Inflation Relief Grants.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll present this item for you this evening. Over the past few months, I've had a lot of conversations with executive directors of our Health and Human Services organizations throughout the community, as well as nonprofit childcare here within the Aspen City limits. And I'm noticing a trend of two issues that usually are not favorable in these situations. Of course, we know inflation has been between 7% and 8%. And at the same time, we're seeing the demand for services in these nonprofits increase at a significant rate. So we're dealing with some basic human needs that are becoming difficult to fully meet with the increased costs of labor, food, transportation, housing, some basic items. So I'm asking for your support to allow the City Manager's Office, in support with the Grants Committee, to do a rapid relief program targeting the 33 Health and Human Services nonprofits who have received grants from the City of Aspen in the last three years, as well as licensed childcare providers within the City of Aspen limits. And we would work again with that steering committee of the Grants Program to have a review of a basic application that identifies what has been the inflationary and service impacts here over the last six months, so we have some documentation around, is this happening? And then bring you back a resolution with recommendations for awards so that we can cut these checks here in about six weeks. Happy to answer any questions you have.
I would just like to say thank you, Sarah, for being on top of this and taking a look at this and bringing this to our council. I think you may have asked us all individually a little bit about it, to put such a large request on the table. And it shows the responsiveness of the city to the real needs and the thanks to our partners who provide so many services. I mean, it's acknowledging the strain that they're all over and offering what we can. So thank you. I wholeheartedly support this.
Thanks, Rachel. John?
I believe it's government's job to help the neediest among us, so I fully support this.
Thank you. Anything, Ward?
Yeah, I just want to echo my appreciation for Sarah for her efforts in this regard. I think it shows real initiative, and I think your community will be appreciative of it. Thank you.
Skippy, I'll give you an opportunity if there's anything you want to add.
I accept. You know, we are all still, whether we realize that we're not living in the reverberations of COVID, it's going to take some time for things to settle to the new normal. And there are challenges all over this nation and world, growing ones and subsiding ones. Most communities do not have the opportunity to step in, even if they wanted to financially, to support nonprofits, to support childcare, to support food banks. We are incredibly lucky as a community to even have this opportunity. This is, you know, it's an absolute honor to be in a position to support those who most need it. So 100% yes, and the most thanks to everyone involved in bringing this forward from, you know, the partners willing to and able to speak up for their needs, to our staff being receptive and creative in hearing them and bringing them to us and to this group as decision-makers. This is just one of those things we're really lucky to be able to do.
I can only echo what's been said here. Sarah, when you brought this to myself and other council members, I think we all were super appreciative of the eye that you had out for the community in this and maintain that today. This is absolutely a feel-good usage of our community's funds and good stewards of those organizations that do so much for us. So thank you very much. With that, I don't, do you need this by motion?
I would appreciate a motion. There is, if it's helpful, there is a proposed motion in your packet on page, which packet page is this? Oh, I just clicked on my staff report. It's on the bottom of my staff report. While you're pulling that up, I will let you know too, is we'll be getting immediate conversations with the potential, there's a total of 35 potential grantees between the two programs, and we'll begin immediate reach out to them with specific instructions about the timeline that they need to respond on. Again, we're not trying to make this a burdensome process, but ensure that we have accountability for the public dollars if you choose to advance this tonight. Thanks.
John?
I move to direct the City Manager to advance an immediate inflationary grant relief program to support health and human service needs and early childhood education. That health and human service grantee eligibility will be based upon being a previous recipient of a health and human service grant award from the city in the past three years. That relief to early childhood education will be focused on providers within the Aspen City limits, and to include the necessary appropriation of funding in the fall budget supplemental requests.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for the Inflation Relief Grants?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That will bring us to the item that we had moved to the end of Action Items. This is requests from council members for more information and possible direction for HPC meetings, access, and the like. Sarah, how would you like to do this, either commencing with an executive session or do you think we'll need one in there, however you'd like to handle?
Yeah, at this point, I'm getting the nod that we should be able to answer things in open session to provide you basic advice. We'll signal to you if we would recommend you go into executive session. And I recommend the conversation be broken in two parts. There's some immediate questions around HPC, but if you're considering removing some of this chair discretion with a directive action by the council, I would encourage you to think through its impacts on all of your boards and commissions, which have very different views on their ability to have hybrid input in meetings and the chair's effectiveness in facilitating that. So those So those are just things that we can provide you more information and detail on if you're interested for your conversation. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our assistant attorney to discuss with you the HPC piece in particular first, and then we can discuss more broadly if you would like tonight.
No, let's stick to the HPC piece right now for the business that's at hand. The longer discussion on this deserves its more time.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to give the board, I think, a little bit more information about sort of how we came to be here with this particular HPC meeting. So, back when the board, obviously when COVID happened, the board enacted some emergency resolutions that allowed planning commissions and boards to hold their meetings via WebEx, as did council. Council decided to hold their meetings via WebEx. As we sort of came out of the pandemic into more of an epidemic, I would say, culture, I think it was left to the boards to decide how to handle this. For legitimate reasons, HPC earlier this year decided to set their first meetings to be WebEx meetings. They enjoy that flexibility. And then have, because they were conducting some work sessions at those second meetings every month, they asked to have those set in person. The reason that it's really sort of, I think, important to understand that these were decisions is because our noticing requirements have required that we provide notice for the HPC for the hearing, 14 days in advance. And under our land use code, with these types of projects, notice is required to be sent, I think it's 15 days in advance, to any individual living within 300 feet of this property. And it also requires posting of notice on the property and publication of notice, 15 days in advance. This is not, generally, we provide two weeks, not just 24 hours advance notice of these meetings. So in light of HPC's decision, we then began setting these projects, and we try to set them as soon as is possible to respect the applicants and their time. You know, they get set as soon as they possibly can with the HPC agenda being what it is. This project was set in accordance with those standards. There was nothing unusual about this project that, you know, went into the consideration other than to get it on the agenda as soon as is possible. In light of that, we gave the applicant notice. They have provided notice pursuant to the municipal code, and that notice does not include a WebEx meeting because this was not planned to be a WebEx meeting. So the notice that was published in the paper, the notice that was mailed to all of the individuals that per your code are required to receive notice, does not include a WebEx address on it. These meetings have been occurring like this all summer, and I understand Mr. Scruggs' complaints, but I want to be very clear that there is nothing about this process that is not transparent in the sense that there are several ways you can provide public comment. You can provide written public comment, which very often people choose that route. You can come to the meeting, you can comment in person. That's still available in this particular, with respect to this particular application that Mr. Scruggs is concerned about. And you can, and if the meeting was set for a WebEx meeting, certainly, we had noticed according to our notice requirements, that would have, it would have been an option to participate by WebEx. But because those notices did not include that WebEx hearing, the public hasn't received notice that that's an option. And we have no way really to get that message out in a timely manner pursuant to the land use code if that changes between now and tomorrow. So I just wanted to provide some information, sort of as to the processes and procedures that have been followed in this case. I want to be clear that Mr. Scruggs can submit written comment. We can read that comment into the record, so it's, you know, verbally provided to the HPC board. And unfortunately, I think that, and the manager's office can speak to this, maybe this isn't my area, but I just want to say that we did, due to emergency circumstances, we, Ms. Simon has appeared by WebEx, but it did not work well. She could hear nothing at the hearing, and we don't have IT staff during these hours that are after 5:00 PM for these various boards. And so for that reason, even if we were to set up a WebEx meeting, I don't know that staff in this room can guarantee a full participation, because if we have technological problems, I don't know how those can be resolved or if they can be resolved with the tools community development has at its disposal. So I don't know if our community development director wants to speak to that?
I'll just answer it. So the thing is, is if you want us to go out and advertise, I just want you to know it took us nine months to find someone to cover your meetings with the current labor market. So this is not an immediate, we would patch this through on a temporary basis. However, I think, again, I would not recommend this be an item you review on a case by cases, commission by commission. You need to have a consistent direction to all of your boards, would be my recommendation as a council, that you speak in one voice on all of both your quasi judicial and advisories. So again, well, if your direction is for us to do that tomorrow night, we've given you our concerns about notice in that direction, if you give it to it. But again, we will follow whatever direction the council wishes to have. I think we experienced yesterday some of the technology issues that even with IT, we would not be able to overcome. So just know that we will do the best we can do to accommodate. We will also discuss with the chair, the chair's comfort level with doing hybrid meetings is also necessary in these situations.
I got, Skippy had his hand up, and then Rachel?
Yeah, I did, just would like a little clarity, make sure we're all talking about the same thing. I have heard various times from various sources that council funding is the culprit for not having this. I've heard that this is chair discretion, that we have granted individual chairs, and that's the reason that's not happening. And now I've heard a third thing, which is it actually may be lack of staff. So can you just clarify, is it all three? Is it two of the three? Is it one of the three? What are we actually dealing with if we wanted to make this happen? And that's an assumption, but I just want to understand what the nexus is.
So again, all the chairs have discretion about whether their meetings are in person, online only, or hybrid. That has been the policy since the COVID restrictions were lifted, and that was discussed with council probably 18 months ago now. Has it 18 months, 12 months, something like that? I apologize, I'd have to go back and check my notes on the exact date. And so that's number one. Number two is, I just want to give you the reality check of how long it took to find the proper IT support for your own meetings. And so if you're asking us to do this for the long term, we will pinch-hit the best we can, but it does not mean it's going to be a seamless process and may lead to additional frustrations from the public in that regard. We would evaluate whether additional resources are needed, depending upon how far the council would expand its requirement if it puts one in place. So if we're talking about one meeting, that's different than if we're talking about all 15 of your boards and commissions. That's a very different resource request that we would not necessarily be able to accommodate in current appropriations. Thank you.
Thank you, that's clear.
The question I wanted to ask was, on what I heard a few minutes ago from you, Kate, was it sounded like they were okay not having WebEx access throughout work sessions, and the second meeting they were having each month was their work sessions as they're working on policy. But now it sounds like decision-making meetings had been moved to that same day.
Correct.
And without saying, oh, well, maybe we should have the WebEx on those days since we're now going to be having actual hearings.
Correct. So I want to clarify that the second meeting of each month, there were some, I think, a list sort of of items HPC was hoping to have discussions with the staff.
Yeah.
They very strongly felt that those discussions were best had in person. They felt they were more meaningful and purposeful if they were in person having these meetings together. We have to weigh that with, you know, getting these applications to HPC in a timely manner as soon as possible, because the applicants are owed that as well.
Yeah.
And so we balanced that, and what we decided to do was have these work sessions, but also set regular business and public meetings and public hearings on those same nights. And so for that reason, they began having these second meetings in person. Certainly, an applicant has the right to request a continuance, like for instance, if that didn't work with them, for them, they could do that. But really, most applicants just want to get before HPC as soon as they possibly can. And we need to balance that with our other needs.
Well, you know, what I'm thinking and based on what I'm hearing here is that we really can't do anything about tomorrow night's meeting. And what I would request is that staff contact Mr. Scruggs and let him know that, and encourage him to write public comments that you can be read into the record with his concern on the application for this meeting. And then I think there should be a little bit of a broader discussion about what or why and when public hearings and decision-making processes are taking place and the public's access to those at that time. And what has struck me, and maybe this is a little assumption on my part, but HPC type of projects are often really in our residential neighborhoods and in areas where people are not necessarily year-round residents or here full-time basis to be able to participate in a meaningful way. And so I'm acknowledging there's really nothing we could do now legally. I mean, they could consider, but I don't think it's, you know, the applicant or, I mean, the petitioner could, who wants to make comments, could request that they move it to another meeting, but they're not necessarily going to do that or required to do that. But again, we can't jump over our own code and change this from this table at this time. But I would appreciate a broader discussion about public access on things like that in the future.
So just some points of clarification is that on behalf of this resident, that request was made of the applicant. They denied the request to change the meeting date based upon their own needs, since this is what was properly noticed.
Right.
So that conversation did occur. I also want you to know that there was multiple conversations with the city attorney's office between the resident and both Jim and, so this has been an ongoing conversation that we've ensured that the resident understands that there's other ways to participate, just not the process, specific process that was being requested.
And I want to be clear, what I did offer to Mr. Scruggs was the ability to provide a voice message. So I don't know if any of you have used those, but there's things called voice messages where you can actually, you know, record a message, and we could have played that into the record. So we've offered Mr. Scruggs that option. We've offered him, he has, I believe, taken advantage of the written option. And I just want to be clear, I don't think that classifying a WebEx participation is less meaningful than written or these other options. They are the same, they carry the same weight. They carry the same weight, they are both recorded on the record. There is no quantifiable difference between these types of participation. And I think it's important that we realize that we don't characterize it as maybe less meaningful, because I really don't think under the law, that's an accurate assessment.
Thank you.
I'm looking for consistency and the ability for citizens to participate most fully. I know from my own experience that somebody showing up in person has more, I think, more of an impact on me than somebody with a written comment. So I'm looking for consistency to say that the first Wednesday, the chair has the technical knowledge and ability to be able to do a Zoom or WebEx meeting, but does not have that same ability two weeks later.
I think that's not the difference here. So what you have here is what's considered a hybrid meeting. You have both online and in person. You are here in person, people can participate online. HPC has conducted WebEx meetings, but they are fully online. There is no sort of trying to get the technology in this room to work with the technology of the public at large. And that's, I think, where the difference lies and the distinction between what you do here tonight and what HPC has done using this WebEx technology.
So to clarify, excuse me just a second, to clarify, the first Wednesday meeting is only
Yes.
virtual.
Correct.
It's not a hybrid. This is new information to me.
And I wanted to make sure you had this information, because I think that coming into tonight, this is, you didn't have all the facts that you needed to sort of evaluate what is really happening. So, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate all that as well. The fact that HPC was not hybrid on one was also, that's also new to me and is meaningful. I mean, look, I have a personal opinion about this, which is I'd love to see all meetings be hybrid, because it provides the most opportunity for participation. And I recognize that we can't say 100% certainty that that is the best and most inclusive public process. It may be that an all-in-person meeting turns out to be better over time. You know, we really just don't know. I, while I'd love to see all hybrid, you know, I do think that giving discretion to chairs makes sense. I've served on enough boards, as you guys probably have, to know that they are all quite different. And so even if that discretion is used in such a way that I don't agree with, I think there's a value in giving agency to the boards and over time figuring out what actually is best through experience rather than assumption. So, but that said, the idea that one chair can make two decisions, that they can do one thing at one time and one thing at another time, and I understand the rational basis for these meetings were different in their presentation or whatever, but I question allowing for that latitude. I think it really does create a lot of confusion, or at least it has the opportunity to in a way that's not necessary. So I would suggest from a policy going forward, we say, hey, you know, you have this discretion, but you got to pick a one-size-fits-all policy for your board, and let them run that way, and try to actually learn going forwards. And if the HPC board decides to go hybrid, or any number of others do as well, you know, this argument about, well, it's really complicated to run these things, it's not. Like, it takes time, it takes some getting used to, maybe it takes a little coaching. This is not rocket science. I feel as though anyone who is dedicated to try and can figure this out pretty quickly. So that would just be my suggestion, and I appreciate that staff has given David a number of ways to participate, including the voice memo, which I love, love the voice memo. And I agree, Ward, you know, I think in-person comments do have a different effect than written or emailed, but the voice memo is a really good option for him, at least this time where last minute, you know, something can be changed.
Yeah, this is the first time I became aware that the first Wednesday was not a hy, I thought it was a hybrid.
No.
Okay. I would like to see, I don't think there's a way that we can make the HPC meeting tomorrow night a hybrid. I understand now what the protocols are at HPC. One is WebEx, one is in-person only. I would like to see the city clerk or the city manager forward to us the date of the discussion that we had 18 months ago for setting this policy. I would like to see all the meetings in-person or all virtual. But with the new information received by me tonight, and I think was new to Skippy as well, that there were no hybrid meetings of HPC. So that is, that's new information. So I encourage in-person meetings. I think they're much more impactful to be able to look around and see facial expressions, nonverbal communication, I think is more meaningful. But I'm not going to pursue any further trying to make this a hybrid meeting where it's never been a hybrid meeting before. And thank you for clarifying that. There, it's like bits and pieces of information that we're receiving on the fly. We had 18 months of that with COVID. I don't think, I want to go through that again. So I appreciate David Scruggs bringing it to our attention. So I appreciate David Scruggs bringing it to our attention, and I appreciate being fully informed on how the meetings have been conducted in the past. And I encourage either all one or all the other. But, okay, that's about all I have to say about that.
Ward, can I just clarify? Are you suggesting that we take a policy of not allowing hybrid meetings, I say as I'm hybrid-ing in?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I encourage hybrid meetings.
But there's a good example of why it doesn't work that well. I think you just illustrated it, right? Clearly. Sarah, did you have comment here? And then I've got something to say.
Can you say more about that, Tori?
Yeah, we're having a conversation about hybrid meetings, whether, first of all, I will tell you, as somebody that sits at this table, if somebody gives me written comments, shows up in person, calls me, sends it by carrier pigeon, I weigh all of that the same, very purposefully as a matter of fact. But number two, like, you, you're hybrid, you're not in the room. Ward just said something that was very clear, but, but it was misinterpreted because of the technology and the communication that we're using. I think that was an example of it, and I'm, I don't need to keep going on about it, but I, I, I think that illustrated it.
Well, actually, Tori, I think that's an incorrect, I think that's an incorrect interpretation of what just happened.
All right.
He said something that wasn't determinate. He said, it should either be this or this. I asked a clarifying question to make sure we weren't inferring something incorrect. He clarified what he meant. Now we all have the same set of facts. So I think what we
Sounds great.
Good question finding.
All right, I appreciate that. Sarah, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to summarize what I was hearing is to go forward with tomorrow's HPC meeting as noticed in that format, and that there's an interest in the council of having some time to discuss this more broadly for all the boards and commissions, and we need to take a look at your work session schedule to find the time for that here sooner than later. That's what I heard. Please let me know if that's correct or incorrect, council.
Yes, that is correct. This needs deeper discussion and revisitation by council. So that is the next step for this in the larger context. As far as tomorrow, because of noticing restrictions and, and other, we are not looking to make change to tomorrow night's meeting. My last comment here is that this has been an unfortunate process that has happened. I appreciate Mr. Scruggs sending an email to us to bring this to our attention, but the way that this has been handled by some members is not the process that we try to go through at, at this table. So I am looking forward to a meeting when we can actually address this in, in the future.
Very good.
Okay. Thanks. Mr. Scruggs, I see your hand up. I'm not going to recognize you at this time because of process and procedure, there, this is not a public hearing. Thank you again for your emails, and feel free to contact us again. All right.
Motion to go in exec? Next item?
Your honor, I, your honor, sorry. I'm used to a different format. You can be your honor.
It is the appropriate title, so carry on.
There has been a request that council go into executive session this evening pursuant to section 24-6-402 sub four, sub F, to discuss personnel matters. The specific items of, of discussion is the city manager's review. If you do vote to go into executive session, that executive session will be recorded, and the recording will be maintained by the clerk for a period of not less than 30 days.
Thank you.
Okay, I would move to approve going into exec, sorry. I would move to approve going into executive session based on the citations by our city assistant attorney.
I'll second.
And acting attorney at this point.
No. No.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for going into executive session. Is there any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote for going into executive session.
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Counselor Richards?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
And yes. For the viewing public, we are going to go into executive session. We will come out of executive session with no remaining meeting this evening, with no decisions being made later, and we will just do adjournment. Therefore, we will
Let grassroots?
Let grassroots go home and not wait until we are done with exec session. Want to thank everybody that participated and that viewed this evening, and have a wonderful rest of your week. And as always, you can reach us, citycouncil@aspen.gov gets emails to us. Thank you. Skippy, you have a hand up?
I just wanted to clarify, is it same link or different link? Am I hanging out or am I coming back somewhere else?
I think you received a
You received a separate link.
Okay.
Separate link.
I'll drop, I'll come back.
Okay. Give us a couple minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, grassroots.